Okay, like to call to order the Operations Committee meeting of April 5th. Uh, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Director Sampson.
Here.
Director Smith.
Here.
And Chair Russell.
Here.
And for the record, Director Schmidt and Vice Chair Kush are not present.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes, Director Sampson.
Yes.
Director Smith.
Hi.
And.
Yes.
Chair Russell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Public comment on non-agenda matters.
There are none.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the minutes of the Operations Committee from March 8th.
Still moved. Still moved.
Second.
Director Sampson.
Yes.
Director Smith.
Aye.
And there are no comments on that.
I think I have to vote too.
Oh, sorry, Chair Russell. Sorry.
No problem. Okay, professional services agreement with Stantec Consulting Engineers.
Hi, good morning, Directors. Alex and I, Engineering Director of, uh, this morning, we have this item and we have Matthew Steiner today, who will be presenting the item. So Matthew, let's go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As Alex mentioned, Matthew Steiner, uh, Associate Engineer, and this morning I will be presenting on, um, engineering design services. All right. So first, I'm going to start off, uh, with just some background. I'm gonna, um, explain why these engineering services are being requested, explain what they're for, uh, and get into the specifics on each project. So two valves for the manual T-Fridus, uh, pipeline project, under Freitas Pipeline Project. Two control valves for the proposed San Clemente Control Valve Project and the San Geronimo Treatment Plant Filter Rate Control Valve Project. So there are three projects in our CIP that have control, controls and electrical components. Each of these projects have a similar need. Uh, they are a priority. And, uh, individual be, individual needs for the project will be explained within this presentation. Uh, our staff will be completing the traditional elements of each project, like the piping and the valves. Uh, we will be leveraging outside resources to capitalize on consulting expertise for electrical and instrumentation design. The result of the consultant effort will be plans and technical specifications, uh, to be included in the construction contract. Uh, electrical and controls designs for these projects pertains to SCADA control valves. So, um, what is a SCADA control valve? Um, SCADA acronym for supervisory control and data acquisition, uh, are like our electronic eyes and ears out in the system. Uh, they allow us to monitor pressure, flows, tank levels, uh, even buildings, the building doors, to name, to name a few. The term control valve is, it's unique to the district. It's not necessarily an industry standard. Uh, it just means that we have the ability to operate it remotely. Um, through careful programming, our SCADA control valves allow automated operation of our systems' pressure and tanks.
So it's actually even hands, not just eyes and ears, but hands.
You're absolutely right. Also hands. These remotely controlled valves can also be manipulated by our distribution operators, so when not in automatic settings, uh, providing the ability to make nearly instantaneous system changes without the need to visit the location. Typically, control valves are globe-style valves that are equipped with pilot assemblies, uh, sensing apparatus, motors, flow sensors, uh, solenoids or switches, depending on our needs. What we have up here on the screen, um, is the Summit Avenue Regulator Pit. There are two control valves, as we can see. Um, a big one on the left is for, for higher flows. The smaller six inch on the right is for lower flows. Um, you can see, uh, on the left, I've highlighted here that, um, it has electrical components for, for power of the valve. It has SCADA control or integration controls integration, um, so that we can kind of talk to it and see back and forth. And it's in a pit, so there is an element of structural design that goes into a control valve as well. Uh, our first project, um, the Fridas Pipeline Replacement Project, this pipeline project will be, uh, moving a portion of our North Marin Line into the public right-of-way. Uh, for reference, the North Marin Line is a transmission line that spans from San Geronimo Treatment Plant all the way to San Rafael. In doing so, uh, we'll be moving the placement of two control valves into the intersection of, I believe it's Montecio, Montecillo?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
One of those. Um, and manual T-Fridus Parkway. Part of that, the new control valves will require power for the valves, which is a new PG&E service connection. A new vault will need to be constructed to house the control valves, uh, and the, the valves themselves, um, for two, two twenty-four inch SCADA control valves and, and, uh, new controls for them. So SCADA connection, not just PG&E drop communications.
And what's the advantage of moving it into the public right-of-way?
The current location, Director, is, uh, it's inaccessible near a fence, so we're trying to move it closer to a better accessible location that's more open, so that way crews can get there, maintain them, install it.
So kind of a mistake in the original.
From the old design, but we're, we're going to improve that.
Okay. And how does the SCADA get its information? Is it wireless or hardwired?
It depends. Both.
But this one.
How will it communicate? Um, for, for Fridas? That's a good question. I want to say it's radio often times.
Most.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of the time, that is correct. It's radio or telecom, depending on the situation, but we'll have control of that.
How vulnerable is that to outside attack, you know?
I, I'm not sure.
Because it gets its message backwards through the radio too, right? It's told what to do to the radio.
That, that is how it can, how it would be communicated back and forth. That's a good question.
Yeah, we, I'm not too sure how that.
I, I'm sure it's secure.
Right.
I don't know how secure, you know, how, how at risk.
Okay.
And it's line of sight, so where is it getting its signal from?
We, we've got various repeaters located throughout the system, and so, um, depending on what our controls techs think, they usually bounce it off whichever one they have the best line of sight to.
Right.
Where should you choose?
Uh, well, they get to point the antenna, you know, whichever direction, often like towards Mount Ham where the antenna is.
Yeah.
It's my understanding they go out there before and they, and they check the signal strength by the different directions, depending on which repeater gives a signal. That's where it's pointed to.
Pretty high-tech, huh?
Yeah.
Uh, valve placement on this project is, is strategic, very intentional. Um, the new placement is at the tie-in from the Lucas Valley Tank Pumps, which, uh, directly moves Sonoma County water through our system. And, um, reference to the tie-in on the tee, both sides of that tee, so coming in from the north, we've got the pump line, and these control valves are on either side of that tee, which means we can now pump water. We are afforded now the ability to pump water either directly west towards Santa Margarita Tank or east towards San Rafael, which is convenient. Um, so currently, the control valves exist, uh, in part of the pipeline that's being replaced. Uh, these new valves will simply take their place with added benefit. The Granada Pipeline Replacement Project will be, um, replacing just over ten thousand feet of leak-prone cast iron pipe in the neighborhood above San Clemente Tank. San Clemente Tank is a high detention tank. High detention tanks are storage tanks where the water doesn't cycle as often as we want. And water quality suffers as a result. They require additional attention and labor through treatment and monitoring uh, above what is considered routine. They often occur in multi-tank pressure zones like San Clemente Tank, which is at a lower elevation than Ross Reservoir, but feeds the same services. By introducing two SCADA control valves under the Granada PRP, we will be creating a new pressure zone using the San Clemente Tank as the supply. This will force San Clemente Tank to cycle more often, which will improve water quality and reduce monitoring and treatment labor. Additionally, utilizing San Clemente Tank will reduce demand on the Ross Reservoir, um, theoretically by upwards of ten percent.
Are we getting nitrification in the tank? Is it that long of detention?
That's a good question. I'd have to check with water quality on that.
What do you think the deterioration of water quality is?
What is the deterioration of water quality?
What's deteriorating by the long detention time?
Just the disinfectant residual.
Right. Then you're probably getting nitrification or at least the start of it.
Uh, San Clemente Tank is one of several high detention tanks in our system. For the remaining high detention tanks, uh, staff is addressing them one by one to address the issue. The San Geronimo Treatment Plant Filter Rate Control Valve Replacement. So the San Geronimo Treatment Plant is what's known as a conventional surface water treatment plant, which means it utilizes a combination of coagulation, flocculation, clarification, filtration and disinfection. An essential part of the process train is filtration. Uh, a filter rate control valve, which is shown on the screen here, is used to control flow through San Geronimo's filters. Each filter has its own valve and they work together to maintain a constant flow through the entire plant. Filtration can be finicky. It depends on our current source water characteristics like organics content turbidity, uh, applied coagulant dose, polymer addition, and even how long the filter has been online. Uh, filtering too fast can cause breakthrough. Filtering too slow can affect overall plant production rates. When in automatic setting, the filter rate control valve will hunt to to maintain a constant level in the common filter-influent channel. It makes many tiny movements every minute to achieve this. When the plant is shut down, it is also responsible for stopping undisinfected water from entering the clearwell, which is a regulatory, a potentially a regulatory concern. The six filter rate control valves, uh, at San Geronimo Treatment Plant are from nineteen seventy-two, when the plant was expanded. They are fifty-two years old. They still communicate using sensing error. They operate pneumatically and are by conventional standards outdated. Uh, in summary, there are three current projects that require similar work, which is upgrading, installing and/or replacing control valves, which aims to improve overall operations within the district. To support internal staff resources, we'd like to leverage consulting experience, consultant experience to provide electrical and instrumentation design work. Staff recommend, uh, review and refer to a regularly scheduled board meeting for the award of a professional services agreement to Stantec Consulting Services for Design Engineering Services.
And if I could just add, as noted in the staff report, two hundred thousand dollars of the consulting fee will be the in-kind services that were negotiated following the design issue on the, uh, clarifier a while ago.
Questions?
Just confirming, this is in our budget that we've already approved.
Correct. Those three projects are in our capital budget.
This is just a formality of approving a contract with external folks. Okay. Great, thanks.
So at San Geronimo, are we changing the valves or just the operators?
Both the valves and the operators.
And what do you think's wrong with the valves? I mean, they may be fifty-two years old, but.
They leak.
I see. So the resilient seats are gone, huh?
Yes. At, at least, uh, we know of that occurring on a couple of the filters, and for valves that are fifty-two years old, we know that they're towards the end of their lifespan, so we're thinking all six, as long as we're doing one of them.
And what will the new operator be likely?
A, a new ma, or I'm sorry, a electronically controlled vein actuator.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Matt, any questions?
No, Larry, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, cool. Can we get a motion to refer it to the full board?
So moved. Second.
And there's no public comment.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Darren. The new Darren, huh? It's been a little persnickety, so be careful. Um, Celié found it was easier to use the buttons than the mouse.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Loud and clear.
All right. Sometimes I get a little close. Uh, good morning, General Manager, uh, Board. My name is Mark Hadeen. I'm the Superintendent of System Maintenance and Support Services. Uh, today we have a, um, a presentation on water main break update. So a brief overview of the presentation, um, we'll be talking about notification and response, classifications, detection and repairs, and an overall summary of the presentation with some key points. Uh, the image on the right, uh, just kind of clarifies, uh, some of the aftermaths of a water main break, um, about a year, a little over a year ago on D Street in San Rafael. Um, and you can kind of see some of the after effects from a, uh, a water main break. Um, there's a road sign in the image, uh, that's laid on the ground with some, uh, caution tape in the area, just kind of securing the area. So it's just kind of a, a graphic image of kind of some aftermath of the look of a water main break. Uh, that one happened to be an eight-inch cast iron water main break. So.
No cars got blasted in this one?
Um, no car damage. Uh, you can see the water level on that Mustang, uh, just a little bit past, um, the debris. Um, just got up to the bottom side of the, of the car, but nothing was really shooting up in the air. It was more of a kind of a, an overflow. Uh, notification and response. Um, typically, um, a majority of the water main breaks get reported, uh, to our distribution operators, uh, through the public or emergency services. Uh, another way we can internally see, um, a potential water main break is through the SCADA Operations Overview, um, which is a screen in the operations room, um, which kind of is a detailed layout of our operation system. And one of the things included in that would be a rate of change alarm. Uh, so a flow change coming from a, a water tank. And within this, um, SCADA system here that they, that they utilize in the operations department or, yeah, department, um, they can, they can view specific systems. This, this image right here is just a broad overview of the entire system itself. But within that system, we can queue in on the different systems to, to include additional tank storage. Um, the distribution operator, um, seat is managed twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, they will inform upon, uh, notification, they will inform a utility system specialist of a reported leak investigation to, to go investigate, whether it be regular business hours, Monday through Friday, or whether it be off hours, uh, overtime, weekends, holidays. Uh, the utility system specialist, uh, will report their findings upon arrival on what they find. Uh, they will classify the leak in the three leak classifications, which I'll discuss later in the presentation, uh, to the distribution system operator. Um, from there, the field supervisor is notified about what's going on, uh, potential leak, um, and further information. And again, I will, uh, get into more of what the field supervisors', uh, roles are, uh, a little bit later in the presentation. Here, basically, just to kind of, uh, almost reiterate, reiterates the, the previous slide, but it's a basic path traveled, um, in, in typical response. So, um, the leak gets reported. That gets passed to the utility system specialist, um, who responds. Uh, typical response time during the daytime is much quicker than after hours or overtime holidays. Um, that response time is, is expected within an hour. Um, so typical day, um, response time's really quick. Uh, there's five utility system specialists that, that kind of drive around Marin County, uh, throughout the normal business day, and they're on twenty-four seven, uh, call-out rotation based on last person called and next person up, and it kind of just rotates down the line. From there, uh, the distribution system operator would be notified. And again, this slide here just kind of, kind of just shows a, a better path of travel from the leak, when it's reported, to how it's responded to. So the distribution system, the distribution operator and the supervisor are notified of the findings from the utility system specialist. Uh, from there, the job is scheduled. So, um, after hours, uh, be it jobs are scheduled, class, uh, delete, based on the leak classification, uh, call-out crew will be called out to repair the leak, uh, during normal business hours. Um, will probably have to divert other district resources from jobs that they're previously working on. Um, so the job is scheduled up and finally repairs are made. Here, this slide here, we have utility system specialists and distribution operator response. So typically, a utility system specialist will identify the leak upon notification. They will respond and identify the leak. They will secure the leak location utilizing best management practices. We will touch up on that later on in the presentation. We'll provide more information on, on exactly best management practices itself. Um, they will take documentation, photos, written journal notes, um, anything relevant to the leak that they're, that they're classifying for repairs. Uh, photos are very important, especially these days. Uh, photos speak a thousand words, uh, especially when you're referring it to documentation. From there, they notify underground service alert. They submit an online ticket to underground service alert. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that ticket can be submitted. What that is, is for other underground utility companies, sewer, PG&E, telephone, cable, to come out and mark their facilities so that we can uh, lay out our excavation, know what's underground, know the potential of what's underground to help us lay out our excavation and the job. They will request a repair crew and additional resources as needed or if needed. So a standard repair crew consists of four staff, a utility crew leader, heavy equipment operator, utility worker, and an assistant utility maintenance worker. Additional resources, uh, based on the severity of the leak and the leak classification, uh, the debris, uh, the cleanup, um, extra trucking equipment that would be needed, um, that's where additional resources would be called out to assist the standard crew or to assist the crew during the normal business hours. The utility system specialist will then send a discharge notification. This discharge notification gets sent out to include leak location, date of the leak, um, estimated discharge. It'll have response times from the time we were notified to the time the water was shut off. There's also a section on there for additional remarks, anything relevant to that that may not be on that form. It'll also, uh, have a checkbox on that form for, um, whether we notified our fisheries and ecologists, um, and what type of best management practice, uh, be it, uh, waddles, uh, drain covers, uh, dechlorination sodium thiosulfate tablets, where those applied. So some general information is about the discharge event itself is, is what's on that discharge notification. From there, the utility system specialists will communicate the type of work needed to the supervisor and responding crew leader. So based on the utility system specialist's experience, when classifying a leak, they can usually tell what the leak is, whether it's a longitudinal crack in the main, whether it's on a service lateral, whether it's a circumference crack around the pipe, and that's just based on experience, what you see, what you're hearing above the ground, um, and, and the history of the area. Some histories of the area, like Paradise Drive, a lot of the leaks out there happen to be circumfural, uh, crack-arounds on the pipeline itself. It's just a known history of it. Um, and from there, they would, uh, relate that information to the utility crew leader as well, um, to make sure proper parts are brought out. We can kind of anticipate the parts that we're going to be needing for repair, whether it be a short piece and, uh, short section of pipe to install, uh, what type of mechanical fittings we would need or service material to make repairs. And that's based on the utility system specialist's experience. We're able to relay that information to kind of get in front of it. The distribution system operator, after hours, holidays, weekends, will contact the repair crew, um, upon notification of the leak classification and repairs. Uh, during a normal business hour, uh, usually the supervisor will, will, uh, gather a crew to make repairs during the daytime. Usually later in the day, we have the distribution operator notify the standby crew, and that's the standby crew that's on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, the distribution system operator will also notify emergency services based on leak classification, could, uh, involve a road closure, uh, with detours, um, letting them know if they have to get to a specific address on a specific street. If there's two ways to, to get into that street, they would have to come from off this street, off this cross street here, or this cross street here. We try by all means not to close roads. Uh, we do make accommodations to get emergency services through if we have to. Uh, but the goal is not to close the road, but in some cases, on some of the bigger leak events, we have to close the road just for safety, both public, traffic, just safety comes first. From there, the, uh, notify Fisheries Program Manager or Ecologist if water discharge enters waterway with aquatic life. That's a pretty standard statement, but in most cases with water main breaks, we notify our fisheries department either way, just for safekeeping. From there, management notification if necessary. Will notify the district's claim adjuster, uh, for any potential claims, whether it be unseen claims at the time, um, or if we question anything could potentially end up in a claim. Or with significant property damage or water getting into businesses, residents, uh, will notify our claims adjuster so that that information with the customer can be exchanged at that time for further documentation and, and follow-up work. We do have, uh, the district does have a water remediation contractor on contract. This is a twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week response contract. Um, every job, every time we contact this district contractor, they come out with a, uh, a job, uh, foreman. And they come out, they address the site, uh, they address the immediate water remediation. So water enters the building, gets into the drywall, soaks up the drywall, they will come in and move furniture out of the way, move storage out of the way, they'll cut the drywall out, the bottom, they'll go about three, four feet up, um, to try and, and remediate that initial water damage. From there, they set up fan blowers, dehumidifiers, it could be for several days at a time. But all that in is to prevent future issues later down the road. Mold, uh, musty smells, all that stuff happens with water if it's not remediated properly. That's why the district has a contractor on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Supervisor response. Supervisor will assign resources based on leak classification and resources needed. A work order will be created by the supervisor for documentation. On that work order are several forms. Uh, you have your leak report. You have, um, meter change information, you have, uh, valves turned, um, and other specific information related to that work that's required. And it's all on separate forms within that work order. Uh, click a tab, go to the form, fill out an information. All that information gets saved on that one specific work order for documentation. A supervisor will make a job site visit. Um, sometimes they have to make a job site visit if there's irritated customers. Um, and it's, it's easy, that happens quite often. Uh, we go out there, we have a water main break, we shut down the water, say twenty-five, fifty people are affected by the water main break, everybody's coming out. Why is the water shut off? Um, and sometimes that can get pretty confrontational. Um, usually our utility system, our utility crew leaders are really good at handling those situations and, and maintaining their calm demeanor. Uh, but there are incidents where the supervisor needs to, needs to show up on site. Um, as well with that, uh, for property damage, uh, severity of the job, job site location, impacts, traffic impacts, be it, uh, supervisor will make a job site visit just to make sure everything's laid out and just give a broad overview look of the job itself and see if any additional resources would be needed. The supervisor will notify the local agency of a leak repair. Uh, with this notification comes the filing of an encroachment permit to perform the work. To include design and submittal of a traffic plan, uh, supervisors utilize a software called Invarion, in which they can go and take a broad overview map, insert traffic, deep traffic signs, uh, directional arrows, that all needs to be submitted, as well as a, uh, site plan, which is just a broad overview map of the job site location. So the local jurisdiction can kind of have a broad view of kind of what's going on and where the work has happened. Along with the work order information I mentioned before, a work order packet could be created, and most of the time is for the district's legal department for any type of potential claims. So all that information that's included in that work order is submitted to the, to the district's legal department so that there's specific informations regarding claims that come forward with specific information for water leak repairs. Uh, when, when a leak is completed, a street opening is then sent to the district's paving coordinator. Uh, from there, the leak, uh, backfill is compaction tested based on jurisdictional requirements or ninety-five percent and above. Um, for instance, Bel- Belvedere requires controlled density backfill. CD otherwise known as CDF, it's not your standard class two virgin base rock sand, it's controlled density fill is what they require. From there, final paving and restoration. As mentioned before, uh, the district utilizes three leak classifications, class one, class two, and class three. Class one is access to drinking waters impacted in a main line must be shut off. In most cases, this is a large discharge event. Um, causing property damage, a lot of direct discharge in the waterways. However, later, um, I will talk about in this slide, I will talk about how a class two or class three leak classification. Can develop itself into a class one based on information. A class two leak, service is not impacted due to the leak, but will be managed on available resources. It is bumped up on the priority chain to be repaired, but based on available resources and the area where the leak is, is. Determined by the field supervisor to schedule and make repairs. Class three leak, the leak is very minor and water loss is estimated to be low. The leak will be repaired within two to three weeks depending on other priorities. These are low water discharge events. Um, but a leak is a leak and a leak needs to be repaired, but this is how the district classifies leaks and base them on repairs. As mentioned with the class ones, a class two or class three leak can develop itself into a class one. Immediate repair and response, and that's based on nearby waterways, where it's at on properties. Um, whether the water main is under somebody's, uh, driveway that's composed of pavers and could. Develop into potential damage, whether it's on a hillside, uh, impacts, um, could be two o'clock in the morning on a major traffic artery. Impacted area in which a conversation will happen with the field supervisor and determine whether or not we need to upgrade that and and make repairs. Uh, so class twos and class threes, even though they're typically low discharge events can develop in the class ones. And that's based on other impacts of the area.
Can you, can you talk through the, the amount of water loss in a class one, two, or three leak?
Okay, um.
I know Alex, we had, we had one in Mill Valley that it, it ended up taking like six weeks to fix, but maybe it was like a class four, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, that's something we used to, we used to joke about honestly when I was, uh, actually a utility system specialist. Like it's a class six or it's a class seven, right? Um, and that's just, that was just kind of a, uh, kind of a comment.
But it was like a gallon and, you know, gallons per minute, so it was. Yeah, I just don't know, I just don't know the size really that, that, that gets us in there.
Yeah, so that's a great, that's a great comment. I appreciate that. Um, this next slide I actually clicked on will kind of give you an idea of a class one. Um, this is a, a large discharge event. As you can see, there's, uh, in my estimation, just looking at the photographs, there's several thousand gallons of water being lost here. This main line is, is an eight inch cast iron main line, it's got a hundred and thirty-five pounds of pressure. So that's a significant discharge event. Uh, following this slide, following, uh, the next couple of slides will be a class two and a class three with an actual visual of images. Um, so that you can visibly see the discharge event. Uh, to classify class ones, twos, and three based on, on actual water discharges. It's kind of hard, it's kind of hard to say. It's kind of hard to say at this time. Uh, but you will see kind of a visual between the class one, class twos, and class threes. Exactly what would, what would constitute that class one.
Mark, do, do you know like some recent large ones, just to give a sense of the scale of how much water could be lost?
I do. Um, information gathered from this Tunsted Avenue San Somo class one water main break. There was a stream gauge in San Somo Creek located about a mile downstream. That stream gauge picked up an additional water flow and estimated it to be about a hundred and thirty-five thousand gallons of water. Based on just this water main break right here. So that's a little bit of information, uh, for class ones. Downstream. Yeah.
It also gives you a little feel for the difficulty of dechlorinating. Because it doesn't necessarily have a point discharge, it's going into storm drain somewhere or creek or something. And it's hard to judge from the operator standpoint, how much do you need? You know, what's the rate? It's, it's a little tricky.
As mentioned earlier in the presentation with the, uh, skater screen for the distribution operators. They can, they can, uh, calculate out based on the rate of discharge and the, and the rate of flow change. The actual discharge within an event. Uh, in most cases, there are formulas that you can do. Uh, to get a pretty accurate discharge information based on water leaks that you see. Uh, but it's, it's pretty, it's pretty hard to estimate pretty accurate on the, on the ones to do, but this one in specific. Um, there was that, that stream gauge about a mile down, uh, that did calculate those flows for this one in specific.
So when this event occurred, it probably was pretty evident that it was probably a class one pretty quickly. How fast were we able to shut it off?
Okay, that's a, that's a great question. Earlier in the presentation, we talked about the utility system specialist response after hours, be it within sixty minutes. Typical, typical working day, it's much faster than that. This specific event here, this water main break was reported at nine twenty in the morning on a Thursday morning. And was shut off at nine thirty-six, sixteen minutes.
And you can imagine the difficulty of finding the gate valves under the water. Yeah, you just give you a little feel for the difficulty, you know, you gotta find the cap, pull the cap. Put the, the, let the operator down there and, you know, close the valve. So it's a little tricky.
Yeah, it can be very tricky at times and that sometimes you have to expand the shutdown to be able to get to the operating valves that you need to limit the shutdown. Um, so there is, it is, it is very tricky. Um, as well, and these, and these photographs here, um, in the photograph on the right there, you'll see additional, uh, public services. Uh, be assisting with this, uh, via the, the peace officer standing there and across what kind of directing traffic about a block down from where the original leak was. The original leak was in front of that blue building on the left. Um, and this is traveling down, uh, towards San Somo Avenue where the peace officers there directing traffic.
Just if I could connect a dot there, which you may already have done. Um, the board is part of this last budget reinstated the valve exercising crew, which is critical for main brakes. Cause what happens, you find the valve, you go there, but it doesn't seat. Then you gotta go more upstream, so more businesses or customers are impacted and more time before it's shut off. So it, it is really connected.
It's also good for them to find the valves so they know where they are beyond the GIS drawings. They actually know up here, oh yeah, that one's over here. What was the cause of this break?
Could be a number of things.
I just curious if he knew if it was one of those longitudinal or circumstantial.
So here in this next slide here, uh, the cause of this break. Could be a number of things, but the actual break itself in the image on the left was a seven foot longitudinal crack on the eight inch cast iron water main. Which we, as you see there in the image, we removed that section of water main and the image on the right, we cut in a new piece of eight inch C nine hundred PVC pipe. And tied it in with some mechanical fittings to make the repair. Here we have a class two water leak out of San Geronimo Valley Drive in San Geronimo in March of twenty twenty-four. This is a visible class two water leak, um, based on what we're seeing above the ground on this particular leak here. You can see in the image on the left, the water pooling on the side of the road, and you can see the wet spot in the image on the right. Kind of taken over a certain area of the asphalt, uh, road itself. On this particular water leak here, we use a technique that we, that's been around for a while and it's drilling test holes is what we did to pinpoint this leak. Sometimes we actually have to get metal rods down on the water main or the service lateral and actually listen for a leak location. The image on the right shows those test holes. Um, there's four, uh, metal bars that are, uh. Inserted through those test holes and it's a two inch diameter hole up that's drilled with a pneumatic, uh, drill by staff. There's drilled down and it's probed until you get onto one of our facilities. Uh, the first initial rod down at the bottom on that one on the right, uh, you can see it's a dry hole, you see some dry material around the hole. The next one up, you can actually see some water coming out of the hole. And the two up beyond that, there's no water coming up out of the hole. So that one rod that's in the middle there will not only tell us. A really good idea of pinpointing the leak, but also tell us how to set up our excavation. So what we did was we laid out the excavation here with the white paint around our facilities, and we're going to dig from the leak back to give staff room. To make repairs on this. So this is a class two water leak. I don't know the exact discharge of this water leak itself, uh, be it a class two, but. Uh, visually and and based on the area out there in San Geronimo Valley, um, it, it elevate, it classifies as a class two water leak.
It also points up the tricky part about the where the, where you see it may not be where it's coming from.
Yes, and and off of personal experience, I've experienced that where. You dig over here and the leak is actually fifty feet down the road, which is why we utilize a technique here. And there's another technique I'll be talking about with the, uh, classifying the class three leaks as well too. There's another piece of equipment that we utilize too.
Mark, part of the reason I'm assuming, but you can speak to it, you're trying to identify the location, one to. Of course, start the work, but also to limit the extent of the, the size of the hole. Cause that drives costs, certainly paving costs.
Yep, and those are great, those are great, that's great input, general manager, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, so like general manager touched on, to limit paving costs, we want to try and get as close as we can and pinpoint that leak location. And and staff are very diligent in, in doing so. As you can see here, we'll take the extra time to put down test holes, five minutes at a time. Saves a lot of work on the, on the tail end. It also affects permitting requirements, it affects traffic flow. Um, if we can pinpoint the leak off the road, it's not necessarily going to have any, too much of an impact on traffic. So there's a lot of adverse impacts, effects that, that is the reason why we put in the effort to really get a pinpoint location on the leak.
Do you find our GIS drawings are pretty accurate with respect to depth? Cause I'm curious about when you drill down. That must be a little tricky, you're drilling right on top of the pipe. How do you know you don't hit it, you know? When, how do you know when to stop?
A lot of that comes with experience drilling the holes. Uh, you drill the holes, you're in a hard layer of compacted material, and then you feel it get into some softer layer. And that's when you need to pull off and, and, and manually probe down to get onto the water main.
So you're in the backfill around the pipe?
Yes. Um, and like I said, a lot of that comes with the experience using the tool. Um. I have seen it where those pneumatic drills will drill down through a water main or a water service. And you know immediately instantly when that happens, because the, well, here comes the water. Um, so a lot of it has to do with experience. Um, a lot of the information pulled from GIS and the depths is pretty, is fairly accurate. Uh, but there is, is some areas where you suspected and you're being told from the GIS or other information that is two feet down and it turns out to be five or six feet. So there, there are, there are the error out.
That's another question I have, you, you mentioned calling USA and, but they have forty-eight hours to respond. So do they respond faster? Do we tell them it's an emergency and they?
Yes.
And do we also have the other utilities marked on our drawings? Like if PG&E has a, a buried line, do we show that?
Some of our engineer drawings do have that, yes. Yeah, there's, uh, two ways to classify a ticket. You can, you can, uh, submit a standard ticket, which is that two day notification. Or you can submit an emergency ticket, which is we need you to respond. Um, and that's, you know, typically for the safety of our crew.
And do we respond emergency to? We have somebody that responds to that same question in reverse, like if gas line's leaking?
Yes, we do. Our utility system specialists actually play a role in that. If there is a gas leak on a weekend or after hours, a utility system specialist could be called out to, to market locate, and they do have the equipment on their vehicles to do so. Yes, during normal business hours, we have a department dedicated to that, but usually after hours, our utility system specialists will respond if needed. Yeah. On this particular class two leak repair, it happened to be a pinhole on a copper service. Uh, staff was able to shut down the service at the water main, um, and cut in a new section of copper, uh, to make repairs on this particular water main. Looking at the image on the left. Um, Director Schmidt, to touch on your leak classification amounts. Looking at this picture right here, I would probably, just based on the picture, say about three to five gallons a minute, just coming out of that pinhole. Next, we have a class three water leak on the Canal Street in Santa Fe in March of twenty twenty-four as well. Here we utilize a different style technique to pinpoint leak location. This is an acoustical device, it's a leak noise correlator, which will take two fixed points with some inputted pipe information. And give you distance from point A and distance from point B and pull you to a central point. Um, you can see in the image on the right with this leak noise correlator here, the graph information on the screen, you can kind of make out. Kind of in between the flash and you, in the center of it, you can see a, a spike. That's a good indication of where the water leak location is. So you're taking point A and you're putting on a fixed point of the pipe here or a facility here, be it a, a water meter, be it a valve, be it a hydrant. You're going to enter in the pipe information all the way up into fixed point B. Which is the distance of pipe type, pipe type material. And then you're going to hit enter and, and the machine's going to do its work and it's going to give you two fixed measurements to pull you to that centralized point. And now that, that still has a margin for error of, of two or three feet kind of either direction. But it still contributes to the diligent effort of locating and pinpointing leak locations to. Save some, some cost further in, in the, in the repair. So this one here is, is a, is a really good locate with this, uh, acoustical device here. As you can see with that big spike I touched on earlier, the image on the left is. In my opinion, a path of, of least resistance to show where this water leak is. It's found its way to this can, this valve can, and it is showing itself. Cause it's a path of least resistance. And it's, you can kind of see how it kind of displays itself on the asphalt street there. It can detect it pretty small, really small. Um. It can get a pinhole in the copper, it can get, as you'll see on the next slide here, the leak was actually on a packing nut on that valve itself. Where it's just kind of burping out of the, out of the actual packing nut itself. Yeah, I would say close to that, yeah. This one right here where the water is, is, is dribbling out of this packing nut. I would say this is probably pretty accurate to that gallon, a gallon a minute, maybe. Yeah, um. Depending on the information that's put in, the contact points, um, the. The area noise surrounding the actual correlation itself, all those contribute to the factor of the actual pinpointing accuracy and any amount of flow accuracy. Um, not to say it can't, but it wouldn't surprise me if it did.
I would imagine it would take a, a fairly observable flow because it's listening. So it's got to be like it's, you know, it's, it's mechanical that it's, it's hearing that spray. The sound, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And sometimes, well, I, and, and it has happened in the past where we've had smaller leaks like this on busy roadways. Where we've gone out in the middle of the night when the roadway is not as busy to pick that, that sound up. So it is pretty. It's pretty, pretty good at, at, at doing what it does.
Yeah, they do this preemptively. So they go out and listen to see if they can find these things.
Yeah, and that, and that's the pinpoint to, once, not only just set up the excavation, but to save an additional paving costs, permitting costs, traffic impacts. Or any other impacts, just try and get as close as we can to that leak location. Cause just because the water's showing up here and you touched on that Director Russell, just because the water's showing up here, doesn't mean the leaks here, it could be down over this way here.
Sorry, sorry. Yes, do we, do we, do we randomly sample or do we go through our system looking for leaks that may not be visible?
Yeah, we do have, uh, two staff in our leak detection, uh, uh, department, uh, that go around and they survey areas. Yes.
Okay.
They do survey areas with this piece, with this equipment, um, to, to find those ones that, that aren't showing yet. And, and they do, they find them.
And how far away can, so if it, if you set it up someplace, how far away can it hear a leak? I guess it's the, the sound of the, the, the volume of the leak probably helps.
Yeah, it's the volume of the leak, it's the, how clean are your contact points? What are your contact points? Um, it will echo say in line valves, the actual body of the valves could, you know, make it echo. Um, and kind of maybe throw into that marginal error of the reading of the accuracy of it. Uh, but depending on, you know, external factors, the traffic noise around, around the area you're surveying. Uh, how clean and, and tight are the contact points, the accuracy of the pipe material that you're entering into the piece of equipment? Um, all play a factor in how, how broad that piece of equipment can, can go. But it it can go pretty far. I I mean, you could put in like, you know, a hundred feet of of cast iron pipe. You know, I've I've done it personally. You can put that in and and it'll it'll correlate the sound.
So under like best conditions, like a hundred feet is is maybe how far it can listen? Just curi, I mean, you know.
I would I would know that that exact answer.
I think it's probably farther than that, but the problem is background noise.
Yeah.
Background noise dominate.
When you, when you're, when you're out surveying, not for a known leak, but just checking the system, how frequently how do you have to be checking in order to detect? So, thank you.
Yeah, uh, like Director Russell, there's a lot of outside line factors that that get into the accuracy and the broad range of this piece of equipment. But it it's a very useful tool. We do have several, we do have a couple of them that we do use. Um, and it's very nice to be able to to pinpoint leaks and and save that time.
And it's one of the things interesting about the Danish AMI. I think it's Kolmar or something like that. Each meter has a classical sensor for this purpose. So they all talk back. They say, I hear this, I hear this. You know, so like if ten meters in a row say, I hear it, then it tells you there's a problem in that area.
I don't know, don't don't get us started on AMI, but that's a really interesting piece of technology that I would wonder whether we're looking at including in what we install, so.
Yeah, it really is interesting.
Value in that, but that might be off topic.
So here again with this class three leak here. Um, and again, to touch on the discharge of the class three, you can see it's it, there's a valve packing nut there. Um, in the image on the left, it's kind of burping water out and dripping off the side of the pipe. Uh, we went in and did a temporary shutdown on this for about a duration of about thirty minutes. Uh, not too much impact. There was nine services, uh, customers affected. Um, but a little less than thirty minutes for the shutdown to install a brand new valve and and repair the leak on this. Some key considerations for water main breaks. Um, I'll just, I'll talk about the information that's here on the slide and then I'll touch on uh, the individual points. So outage, extent, duration. Uh, you have system impacts, multiple customers, property damage, residential and business. Uh, system impacts uh, could be the amount and duration of time that a water main needs to be shut off in a specific location and what that water main does. Does it uh, provide water up further into the distribution system and the other storage tanks? Um, is it on um, a regulated system? Uh, could have effects, uh, multiple fire hydrants could be affected, multiple personal uh, fire lines to specific properties, buildings, commercial uh, could all be affected. Uh, the duration of the shutdowns and the outages depends on the job. Here's a picture of a twelve inch cast iron water main break on Bridgeway in Sausalito. You can see what it did to the to the understructure of this road here. Um, there were significant impacts on this one. Um, as far as property damage goes, you can see it's going to affect traffic. Um, and I believe in the original, we had to detour the traffic into the other side of the center island there and and temporarily create and detour traffic around until we got it under control to kind of see the severity of the issue under the water. Um, but multiple customers, multiple businesses can be affected. Uh, fire hydrants can be affected. Um, and the duration of the shutdowns themselves kind of depend on the job itself. Um, the amount of cleanup, the amount of backfill that needs to be done, uh, what the actual repair is going to be. Uh, so all those are kind of unknowns until we peel back the layers of asphalt and and see exactly what's going on. So that that definitely contributes to the duration of it. Um, property damage, uh, both residential and business. And along with this, uh, we talked uh, briefly mentioned uh, before in the first overview slide about vehicle damage. Um, vehicles do park on the side of the road. Uh, that is where the curb and gutter is, and that's where a lot of the water that will accumulate. And vehicles do get damaged from time to time. Be it the the water level gets up on the side of the door, gets into the weather stripping and enters a car, or the water shoots up through the street and starts throwing rock and debris, and that debris will land on the car. Um, so there is uh, the potential for some vehicle damage as well.
You might remember, Monty, we had a BMW that got wiped out in Belvedere.
Happens.
I've I personally shown up to uh, water main leaks and and seen rocks on on the top of rooftops of how of homes. Um, so it, vehicles are definitely impacted by this. It's not just the businesses or the residences. And a lot of the times, the water gets in, it saturates the floor. People got a lot of storage stuff in there and cardboard boxes. And it's just not, this is not good. This one in particular, uh, the the discharge of the water went, there's a parking lot just off to the left side of the photo, and there's a bunch of storage unit buildings that contain individual offices. Uh, there were a number of them affected with this with this particular water main break itself. Um, could be personal business, could be storage. Vehicles were in there. Uh, there was a lot of stuff that were impacted from this this particular one. But there's a lot of things regarding the property damage, the residential, the business, uh, the vehicles. Um, another impact um, would be pedestrian impacts as well. Uh, people impacts, uh, sidewalk, uh, pass, uh, crosswalks here in this case here, uh, to where we have to direct or detour people into another another area.
Do we handle fire hydrant brakes or knockovers by cars the same way? More or less same crew or is it different?
Depending on what's broken. A lot of the times those things are equipped with a break off riser. That's it's name says what it does. It is supposed to break off. Um, we do repair those um, on on case by case. Uh, sometimes they get damaged below the ground. Uh, we're able to isolate it off at an isolation valve, depending on the the makeup of that hydrant run, be it mechanical fittings, cast iron, we're probably going to want to get on that and and make some repairs. Uh, but we do handle that stuff, yeah.
Yeah, keep in mind like a fire hydrant is fifteen hundred gallons a minute or some number like that, maybe even more with no no hydrant on it.
Been directly underneath a couple of them. I'd like to hand the presentation over now to um, Lucy. I'll let Lucy introduce them.
Turning on, uh, good morning, Lucy Coy, Water Quality Manager. Um, and I'm going to speak to the chlorinated discharge impacts that happen with main breaks. Did I go too far? No, so as Mark's mentioned, um, there's a response that happens with operations responding to main breaks and a procedures associated with it. Um, with not only responding, but the repairs. Um, and along with that, there's also a response that happens with fisheries and environmental compliance. And so I'm going to speak to why that is. So the district um, is enrolled under a statewide general uh, NPDS permit um, and has been since two thousand fifteen. Um, we were part of the development that happened in two thousand fourteen. And um, this permit uh, covers us for any discharges from our drinking water system that's chlorinated, um, both planned and unplanned. So planned discharges are when we plan them. So we discharge from our um, pipelines if we are flushing for water quality reasons or from our uh, distribution tanks um, or testing hydrants. And then unplanned discharges are the main breaks that we've been talking about today. Um, and so that's how this gets wrapped into the process that we're talking about. Um, and to to comply with the NPDS permit, um, it requires us to have best management practices that we ensure happen out in the field. Um, we do monitoring and training and record keeping and reporting that's all associated um, with this process. So many of the components that Mark has already mentioned have been incorporated or were additionally incorporated into the procedures um, in order to comply with this permit that's been in place. And I'd also like to note that this permit, um, we're enrolled in it. Um, and most water agencies in the state are enrolled in it. Um, we don't really have a choice because we have, we have chlorinated water and it has to be discharged in some form or another. Um, so just wanted to note that.
It's going to be discharged.
Right. So uh, as Mark mentioned, it's sometimes tricky to know where the water is coming from and finding the the break under the concrete. Um, but often knowing where the water might go is a little bit easier, knowing where the storm drains are. Um, you can kind of see where the flow starts to go, um, downhill usually, path of least resistance. Um, and so we have some best management practices for chlorinated discharges um, to control both sediment and erosion and and declor. Um, and so we have dechlorination mats and tablets that get put out um, for the water that gets into the storm drains and then um, ultimately downstream into a creek or waterway. And I have a map later that I'll show you. Um, and then sediment, we we have wattles that get put down, as you can see in this picture, um, kind of on the side of the road. And then also just to to slow down, slow down the flow of water as well, um, and control any sediment. So this is a another flow chart just showing that. So operations is is running off, working on the repair as fast as they can. And at the same time, they notify fisheries and environmental compliance. And and where we go off in our in our world is that um, with fisheries, they get notified. And fisheries then deems whether or not an inspection is necessary um, based on the information that's gathered at the site from um, the valve techs that go out and the operations, the the report that initially is is comes back from the main break. Um, so how close the main break is to a creek or a waterway that could be impacted and how large the um, the main break is. And then um, they will go out and look at the stream if if it has been um, large enough and deemed necessary. And they'll, they'll do the inspection. They'll go up and down the stream. They'll see if there's any impacts. They'll look and see, is there sediment that's been carried downstream into a into the creek? Um, have there been any adverse impacts to fish or aquatic life in the creek? Um, and and do quite a comprehensive um, uh, check up and down, um, looking to see um, have there been any impacts? From there, they either will report back to um, environmental compliance or they will uh, create a biological report that comes from our fisheries group that summarizes the information they've come up with and um, send it to our environmental compliance group. Um, and so just summarizing a little bit of what I just noted, um, this map shows the uh, the 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 sites within our district, within our district that are that are considered um, the response area for fisheries, which seems to cover most, if you if you can see. Um, and it's it's quite incredible. Um, sometimes we get questions from the regional board about some of the main breaks we have. And and we've had many conversations with them and we talk about the topography that we have. Um, and we have um, the the number of creeks and the number of um, waterways that we have um, in Marin and and just the challenging, um, the challenges that come with the the land that is associated with Marin and and operating a system as complex as we have. So the fisheries response, as I noted, they'll go out, usually if it's the same day, um, they'll be out there or they'll be out there within twelve hours. If it's if it's um, after hours and take photos, talk to anybody that's on site. Um, and then document and report back. And that report goes to our environmental compliance group. Um, and our environmental compliance group from there reports to the regional board. Um, so they take that report and report within twenty four hours that there have been adverse impacts to the creek that's been, that's been um, that's been noticed. Um, and then once those notifications have gone out, we work on a five day report. So the um, the first notification that goes out within twenty four hours is um, is usually a very quick notification. Um, it's more important to get it out and make sure that um, we notify uh, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, NOAA. Um, we also call Cal-Warn. Um, we've been working with the regional board for a while now and they and we actually, any discharges that are estimated above fifty thousand gallons, we um, we report to Cal-Warn and Cal-OES. Um, and so that sometimes can send out a report that ends up notifying more people as well. Um, and then over the next five days, we work on somewhat of an investigation, um, creating a written report and using the data that's um, the data and information that's collected at the site and putting together the pieces. So Mark talked about Tinsted a little bit and looking at, okay, is there a stream gauge downstream? Can we estimate? Um, what is the information that we can gather? Um, how much water was actually discharged? Was there a reason that the water um, that the main broke? You know, is what what kind of uh, material type is it? How large is it? What's the history of this main? Um, and try to put together the story a little bit to understand why it may have, why it broke. Was there anything that we could have done to prevent it? Um, and then also work with our engineering capital group and understand, you know, is this a reason for reprioritizing? Where is it on our CIP list? Um, and so that's some of the work that goes into the five day report. Um, and is is somewhat an interesting process in itself, um, so.
Especially the part about the volumetric estimation.
It is, it is, because um, when they're responding, they're responding. They're they're doing what they need to do to shut it down. And so they put down a visual report of what they see, which can be anywhere from five to ten thousand gallons. And then you look at what data can be collected downstream, if there's a stream gauge that's available. Um, and it's often very different, but it's no fault of anybody. It's it's you're just doing the best you can with the information that's in front of you, so.
But like you say, then OES gets involved and you know, it goes on from there. Although I've never actually seen them respond. You you send them, they never see.
No, we set, we notify them, um, but we've never had anybody come on site.
So.
So, yeah, and um, so I, that's, that kind of closes up our our role in the environmental compliance and with fisheries. And um, I'm going to hand it back to Mark and he's going to close up with some stats on main break.
You might mention or yeah, identify about, I'm thinking before you were here, it's still Krishna, I think, maybe five years ago.
Mm-hmm.
We got hit two hundred thousand dollar fine.
Yes.
For, it's great, illegal take of fish. We we killed them with the chlorinated or aminated water. And then the, we collected them as a favor. And they got us for collecting them, basically, as I recall, and putting them in the freezer. We we were trying to do what was right and they said we took an illegal take of the fish. It's kind of a, I thought it was kind of an odd determination, but it cost us two hundred grand.
Uh, this next slide here, uh, system wide main leaks from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty three. Here's a a simple graph of numbers that appear to be pretty steady. And I'll touch up on these numbers in the next slide too as well, uh, which kind of gives a little bit better explanation as to exactly what these numbers are doing, uh, whether they're increasing, decreasing. But here on this chart here, you can see a steady um, steady numbers. Uh, two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty three, uh, total class ones, class twos and class three leak classifications. Um, and the the total number there that that were repaired by year. Um, all these numbers uh, were uh, exported from our GIS uh, from leak reports uh, classification for leaks. Um, so they're pretty accurate numbers. Um, and again, on this next slide here, you'll see our water main leaks compared to industry average. Uh, AWWA industry average numbers are twenty five water main breaks per hundred miles of pipe per year. Uh, that's that's the industry average. Uh, within nine hundred miles of pipe within our system, that equates to two hundred and twenty five main breaks per year. As I said in the previous slide with just the bar looking at numbers, it it looks pretty steady. This line graph here on the left gives a better representation of what those numbers are actually doing. So that orange line at the top is an industry average based on our numbers of based on twenty five water main breaks per hundred miles of pipe within nine hundred miles of pipe within our system. And that orange line represents the two hundred and twenty five main breaks per year being an average based on those numbers. The black line down below shows the numbers by year within that five year span, starting from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty three. So from two thousand nineteen, twenty and twenty one, you see a pretty steady downward trend. There was a slight anomaly in two thousand twenty two, uh, but then again, moving past twenty two into twenty three, you do see that downward trend pick up again. Um, so that's kind of a better uh, visual that we are trending down in the right direction as far as total water main breaks per year.
Do you um, so water main breaks in our class threes qualify as a as a water?
Yes, this does include class three leaks.
And and their standard does too. It's it's any.
Mainly, yes, okay. Yeah. So in summary, a couple of points to mention. Water main leaks are an inherent part of a pressurized distribution system. Here we have a pressurized distribution system. Leaks are going to happen. It's an inherent part of the system itself. Uh, the frequency is usually driven by age, material and corrosive soil. Those are some of the main frequencies of that causes. Uh, the district averages around two to three main leaks per week. Um, and with continued investment and rehabilitation to support infrastructure and further CIP projects, um, and where we're going in the twenty fiscal year, twenty four and twenty five years, uh, with the increased budget amounts uh, for more pipe to be replaced, will only contribute to those numbers uh, continuing to decline as we as we move forward in total numbers.
Um, a couple uh, additions I wanted to share. One, um, we've reinstituted um, board notification.
board notification. So we used to class one leaks, um, I mean, uh, notify the board in the district. So Darren is now going to be doing that for large leaks. Also wanted to share, you know, we could only put so much in the presentation, but there is another parallel piece that, of activity, and that's the claims process for property damage and is quite an activity. So you can see two to three of these, about three a week occur tremendous amount of unplanned work that gets mobilized and, um,
Clearly we want to hear from the district before we hear from the residents. That's the whole key to the thing. So at least you know it's coming or it could come. Very helpful.
Yeah.
Uh, that was a great presentation, Mark and Lucy. I think it was frankly, one of the best I've seen. Um, any questions, Matt?
No questions, Larry. Just want to thank Mark and Lucy and echo your comments, Larry. That was a great presentation. And just an acknowledgement of all the work that goes on that we never see or hear. Could be sleeping while it's going on, but appreciation to all the crews that are taking care of business day in and day out. Thank you.
Like the fire department.
Kind of.
And, and IT, you know, where you're like, it's when it's working, you don't care, but when it doesn't, you're, it's a crisis. Um, I'll just echo, I, I think this is such a great presentation that like, I, I think it's worthy of like a recording and putting it up on our, our website because people don't understand what it takes to run the district. And I think, and it, but it costs money and this is part of what people do and the work that's done and how tricky it is and how much thought goes into it and knowing when to, when you're drilling exploratory holes, like the experience that it takes to know when you've pierced from one density of material to another, like those are things that really are valuable and meaningful and are what make the district um, special. I mean, in the sense of really capable to maintain the system. I had no idea we had so many breaks. I mean, there, there's just everything that goes into it is really all behind the scenes kind of stuff. I just think it's fascinating. So, um, maybe that's part of the reason why I'm here, but like also I think other people in our community would really benefit from being able to, you know, to understand. So, you know, um, just food for thought there. Um, no recommendations about how to do your job better. You're clearly, you guys clearly know what to do. Um, just a couple of questions though about, um, um, is there, is there a, um, a seasonality to, to, to breaks? Is it, do they tend to happen in, in one time of the year versus the other?
Honestly, if you, if you really looked at the, the dated numbers that, uh, we showed in the last couple of previous slides, you, you could probably make that conclusion, but it's kind of within that pressurized system, I mean, the water main leaks are going to happen when they want to happen. Uh, we used to joke a couple of years ago about water main break season. And it would come right around Thanksgiving time and it was like a month and a half period where you just knew it was coming. Um, and you look at when we change lakes, you look at temperature, there could be a number of factors. Um, you could look at dates and just, you know, maybe make that conclusion. But it's really hard to say. And again, it kind of goes back to that summary point of this, it's an inherent part of our system and it's going to happen. And there's really no particular rhyme or reason or exact point in time when it happens. It's just, it's just part of that pressurized system and it happens. One break on one neighborhood over here. Once that gets repaired, could have done something further down in the system that's going to show itself a week later or a month later or, so it, it, it kind of just works itself out through the year, to be honest.
Yeah. Um, uh, one of the things that you mentioned in terms of obviously the public interface and the fact that the board now gets notified when these, when these larger breaks occur. I wonder whether, um, you know, because there's, when you see on the side of the road, you're driving by, you're like, wow, what is that? Why? I wonder whether, um, whether signage, district signage that just says, you know, water main break. And, you know, and like a number of days until it'll be repaired or something would, would allow people to understand what's going on, might reduce the, the amount of like, um, contact that, that the district gets from all these people who are like, what's going on? What's happening? Why? You know, why is my water out? And maybe that might also help people to just be more understanding of our district and what it is that we do. So I don't know if that would be helpful, but knowing that you do have to deal with people who are concerned, some of them are upset, you know, about why their water is out. It might help just take care of it.
That's, that's a really great consideration. We'll definitely take that into consideration. Some of that, to some of that point, uh, we do currently do that now on, uh, some of our larger breaks or some of the major impacted areas. We try to get as much information as we can to our communications department to put something out there. Um, so we do kind of tail into some of that stuff right now. Um, but yeah, I agree with you. It's something definitely to.
It's an interesting comment, Monty. Um, I, I've been thinking about the same thing, whether we should do this again at the board meeting, but probably with the digital, it, it's available, you know, people want to see it. But I think your idea of putting it on the webpage is a good one. And I'm, I'm thinking that your idea about the, the talking boards, um, that might be a good thing to do also for our excavations, like for lazing pipe. Have a board that says, you know, this progress of this job is scheduled for another 100 days or 99 days or 98 days, 97 days.
I, I do know that Adrian is developing, um, signs for jobs that are kind of investing in your water system, that sort of stuff. And your comment, we did take a note on it. We'll talk about because there, yeah, on the truck, something you just stick out, um, water emerges, something.
Like those Caltrans ones, you know, the battery operated displays, right? Just, you know, spill out what's going on.
Yeah.
You know, this is being replaced from here to here and it's scheduled for this period of time. It, it, you know, everybody's curious.
They're looking anyway. Yeah. They're slowing down to look, you know, so why not inform a little bit along the way? It's, and especially if it's, if it's, if it's maintenance and it's, it's the kind of stuff that we're investing in to improve our reliability, like letting people know that. I think that's great. Anyway, thank you so much.
Tom Cronin believed that the brakes in the cast iron, the one on the top came when the temperature changed. He was pretty adamant about that. But, you know, I don't know that he actually researched it or it's just tummy rubbing.
There's, there could be a lot of reasons. They, they can come from all over the field, a lot of them. And I remember being asked that same question by customers when I would show up and shut off a water main break about what caused it. And it's in my mind, if I knew what caused it, I would have been out here earlier to prevent it. Right? So there's a number of, of fields that could come in from, but yeah.
But the paradise one you, you talked about, I live off paradise. So, you know, that's seems to me that's something about the road that's causing it to shear in this plane.
It, it, it could be based on that location. Yeah.
Or, you know, maybe the bedding's not right.
Lucy, do you, do you know about how often we have adverse fishery, uh, waterway impacts?
The last, the last few years, it's been about one to two per year.
Okay. Might be good to have us notified about those as well.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thanks for the presentation. Really appreciate it.
They often make the IJ when they're significant because of dead fish. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the public?
There are none.
Okay. Well, with that, we're going to adjourn. Our next meeting is May 17th. Thank you very much.